Zoning Board of Appeals, Thursday, May 27, 2021. Place of meeting is remotely via Zoom or in person at Town Hall. In-person masks are required. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, order concerning imposition of strict limitations on the number of people that are gathering one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will strive to provide access to such meetings via link to call-in or other similar options. In the event we are unable to accommodate the same, despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of the meeting as soon as possible following the same. No in-person attendance. Well, sorry. Okay, that's changed. All right, so tonight's meeting agenda, we have Zoning Board of Appeals reorganization. Our first public hearing is continued. Public hearing for 17 Old Depot Road application for variance. 7:15 PM, we have a new public hearing for Westgate Drive, application for variance. And 7:30 PM, we have a new public hearing, 59 Foblogav, application for appeal. Is the policy of the town of Oxford provide access to all citizens? Any physically challenged person wishing to attend? A meeting of any town board committee or commission should notify the town by calling 508-987-6030. Agenda items are subject to change. Okay, so reorganization of the board. We have chairman, vice chairman, and secretary positions. My understanding is that all members would like to continue with their current positions and that no other members wanted to change or move into those positions. So if that's not the case, let me know. Otherwise, I would entertain motions to nominate people into those positions.
Mr. Chairman, if I could start, I would nominate yourself to continue on as chairman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a second, and now we have to vote on that.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes, yes.
It has to be a roll call vote. It has to be a roll call vote, each of you individually, and state somebody's name, and you really should have called a roll call for attendance at first.
Okay, I'm gonna back up a little bit, call a roll call for attendance. David Silverman?
Present.
Dan Champagne?
Here.
Tom Purcell?
Present.
Al St. Germain?
Present.
Stephen Balconis?
Present.
And myself, Pete LaFlash, present. Okay, so back to the vote. Tom had seconded that, so Tom, how do you vote?
I, Tom Purcell, votes in favor of Peter's remaining as the chair.
Al?
Al St. Germain votes in favor.
Steven?
Steve Balconis votes in favor of Peter being the chair.
Dan?
I, Dan Champagne, votes in favor of Peter remaining as the chair.
David?
I would love to make it unanimous. David Silverman voting in favor of Peter remaining as chairman.
All right, and I abstain, Pete LaFlash. Okay. Got two other positions to nominate. We have to go through this twice. We have a motion to nominate.
Steven is currently the vice chair.
No, I'm sorry, David is.
David is currently the vice chair. Okay, I'd like to nominate, I'm Tom Purcell, I'd like to nominate Dave Silverman as a vice chair for the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, is there a second?
Al St. Germain.
Okay, and we'll call for the vote. Dan?
I, Dan Champagne, in favor of David Silverman remaining as vice chair.
All right, Tom Purcell?
Tom Purcell's in favor of allowing Dave Silverman to remain as a vice chair.
Al St. Germain votes, yes.
Steve Balconis votes, yes.
Pete LaFlash votes, yes, and David Silverman?
David Silverman abstains.
Okay.
Clerk is next?
Secretary, yes.
Secretary? They, that's Steven currently, right? I'd like to nominate Steve Balconis to remain as the secretary for the board.
You have a second?
May I second that, that Steven remains as secretary?
You can pick Mary. We had two people second, so.
Al started first.
Okay, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So Dan, how do you vote?
I, Dan Champagne, I vote yes, in favor.
David Silverman votes in favor.
Tom?
Thomas Purcell votes in favor.
Al?
Al St. Germain votes in favor.
I also vote in favor of Pete LaFlash and Steve Balconis. Okay. Okay, so now we're going to proceed with the continuation of the 17 Old Depot Road public hearing. Legal notices were read at the past meetings, we're not going to go into that. The only new piece of information that I had seen was a letter from the town of Oxford, DPW. I think this was one of the items that had been requested at the last meeting. And I'll just read this very quickly. It's, Dear members of the board, this letter serves to inform you that Ray Barnival recently approached the DPW to discuss the feasibility of connecting the subject property to sewer by means of extending the town sewer main up Old Depot Road. Sewer main presently terminates at the intersection of Old Depot and Depot Road. Mr. Barnival was recently approved by the DPW as a licensed drain layer in town. The DPW is open to the prospect of Mr. Barnival extending the sewer main up Old Depot Road at his own expense, subject to review and approval of his connection permit application prepared by a Massachusetts licensed professional engineer. Please do not hesitate to contact my office should you have any questions. Jared M. Duval, DPW director. The one thing I would like to add here is we have, David, you've.
This meeting is being recorded.
David?
There was a little glitch in my system. I apologize, Mr. Chairman, would you repeat that?
Sure, so you've recused yourself from this, from this, participating in this meeting at the previous meeting, that's correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have recused myself.
Okay, and then Al did not participate, of course. Al did not participate the first time. I don't believe you can participate in this, Al, also. Okay, so we're, as we were, this is to the applicants, Mr. Barnival, we are as we were previously, we have four voting members of the board. We would be the only four participating in this meeting. Okay? All right, all right, so the one thing, the other thing I would add is I think there was requests for some items for you to work on or provide. I had it listed that there was, again, the letter, we were looking for a letter from the DPW confirming the ability to tie into town septic. I think we were looking for a building plan that had dimensions, and there were questions about the accuracy of the lot size that we had suggested needed to be cleared up by a, maybe a registered land surveyor, if I have this correct. And then I think there was, I also had a note that there was the town engineer info on how to tie into the laterals, but I'm not sure that was one of the requests we had.
Sorry, what was the last item, sir?
Town engineer on how to tie into the laterals. Maybe that wasn't.
No, it was part of a sewer connection.
Okay, part of a sewer connection, so. Right, so I'll turn it over to the applicants. Let us know what the status is, how things are going.
Okay, my name is Ray Barnival. I'm Christopher's father. To the honorable chair and members, at this time, I would like to withdraw my request without prejudice. I would like to thank everybody for putting in their time to help us out. But like I says, we would like to withdraw our request without any prejudice.
Okay. Is there anything official we need on that, Mary? Does he need a letter or that, or?
He should submit something in writing.
Okay, so I'm not sure you heard that, sir, but it'd be helpful if you could forward something in writing just for the record, so we would have that.
No problem.
Okay, all right, well, thank you for your time.
The board should vote to accept his withdrawal without prejudice.
Okay, all right, so with the four voting members, we're looking for a motion to accept his withdrawal without prejudice.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Mr. Barnival's withdrawal, letter of withdrawal without prejudice.
Okay, that's Tom.
Reluctantly, I'm sorry that he couldn't go on with it, or didn't, chose not to go on with the project. I thought it was, it merited to definitely some consideration.
Thank you.
Keep it, keep it up for the future, that's all.
Yes, well, that, this would mean that we would be able to come back, correct?
Absolutely.
Yes, because I thought you explained it pretty well to me, Thomas, and I understood what you said. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and we need a second for that motion. Second motion, okay, we have the second by Stephen Balconis, and Dan, how do you vote on accepting the withdrawal?
I vote to accept.
Okay, Tom Purcell?
Tom Purcell votes to accept.
Steve Balconis?
Steve Balconis votes to accept.
And I, Pete LaFlash, votes to accept, so hearing is concluded. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Barnival.
Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
You're welcome.
Thank.
All right, the next hearing that we have was scheduled for 7:15. Legally, can't start until then?
You've got two minutes.
Yeah, so folks, we, the public notice, the hearing notice went out for 7:15 PM, so legally, we can't start until that time. Usually, they run over that, but this one actually. We're gonna hold for two minutes. Yes, hi, Mr. O'Malley? You speaking?
Yes. No, I'm not, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Did someone have a question, or? Well, okay. Not sure if you heard, but Mr. Barnival withdrew his application without prejudice. He doesn't want to go forward with the project at this time. I know, Mr. O'Malley, you were on to that hearing. Were you able to really hear that, or?
I did hear that it was with front, yes. Very happy about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. I think I'd like to share, Tim? I think I'd like to share that when I go, when I redo their application. What do I do? Hit escape? I can't escape.
No, just hit the share.
Okay, I'll hit the share and I'll see one of the things. Okay, that's fine. All right, I'll wait till we believe the notice. Right, so I have 7:15. Right, all right, so it's 7:15, and we have the public hearing on 4 Westgate Drive, application for variance. Steve, would you please re-leave the notice?
Sure. Tom of Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals, public hearing notice. Please take notice that the Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a remote public hearing using the Zoom application on Thursday, May 27, 2021, at 7:15 PM to consider the variance application of Barbara Gould for property owned by Barbara Gould located at 4 Westgate Drive, Oxford, Mass. Assessors map 29D, parcel K16, and R3 residential zoning district. The applicant requests a variance of the minimum rear yard setback requirement as set forth in the Chapter 10, Table 6 of the Oxford zoning bylaws to install above ground pool. The applicant can be due in the office of the town clerk or land management department during normal business hours. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the place they end times designated or submit written comments to the board before the date of the hearing. See masspublicationnotices.org for legal notes. Board of Appeals, town of Oxford. The applicants of the zoning board of appeals are hereby advised of the following provisions of the Oxford zoning bylaws. Appeals appealed to the zoning board of appeals must be filed within 20 days from the decision which is being appealed specifying the grounds thereof. Special permits. Special permits may be issued only for uses which are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this bylaw.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. He doesn't need to read the special permit.
It's a variance. Oh, variance, yes. In fact, I have that one highlighted, I didn't see it. I thought that, huh? Variance is, in order to grant a variance for the requirements of this bylaw, the zoning board of appeals must find that all the following conditions have been met. There are unique circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape, or the property of such land or structures that be especially affect such land or structures but do not generally affect the zoning district in which it is located, and that C, a literal enforcement of the provisions of this bylaw should be involved substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, but not of a personal nature to the petitioner or the appellant, and that the desirable relief may be granted within substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the purpose of this bylaw. In accordance with Chapter 48, Section 15 of the Mass General Laws, you are hereby advised that any person agreed by this decision of the board relative to this matter must file an appeal as provided for in Section 17 of the said chapter 48 within 20 days after the date of the filing of this decision in the office of the town clerk.
Thank you, Stephen. All right, so I'm going to ask the members to go through the roll call again. I believe we're gonna have all six members participate, but we're only allowed to have five vote, so I believe, Dan, you're gonna be the alternate on this. So if the members, I guess, would state their name.
Thomas Purcell, member.
Okay.
Alfred St. Germain.
Steve Balconis, secretary.
David?
David Silverman, present.
Pete LaFlash, present, and Dan Champagne?
Dan Champagne, present as an alternate member.
Okay, thank you. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna share the screen here. The applicant submitted their application, I'm going to try and share that. Full screen.
I don't think that's it.
No.
That's not the right one. There we are.
Is that readable?
Absolutely, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so this is the front page of the application. We have the applicant, Barbara Gould. Installation of above-ground swimming pool, I believe it's 18 feet in diameter. Then a R3 residential district. This is the listing of documents that are required to submit the application. This, huh, looks like that's the front page of the application again. This is the legal notice that Steven had read. We have a copy of the deed to the property. This is the certified abutters list. It shows the different abutters. We have a plan by a professional land surveyor showing the location of the pool, 18-foot diameter, with the dimensions showing that it would be, the proposed is 7.1 feet from the property line. I believe this is a normally 20 foot needed at the rear, so the applicant is looking for 13 feet of relief.
May I add a comment here?
Sure.
Who is it that's speaking?
Barbara Gould.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
The applicant. I just wanted you to know that that property is just vacant land and is not large enough to build a house on.
Which property?
The one where the border is only 7.1.
Sure, yes.
From the pool.
Yes, we'll give you an opportunity. Sure, okay, after I go through the packet, I'll actually turn it over to you and let you tell us what you're asking to do. And then, and then after that, I'll have the board members ask questions if they have any. And then after that, I would open it up to anyone that's in the public that would like to be heard.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, thank you.
Sure, and then the next next page is a letter basically from, from Mary stating that there was a denial letter from the zoning enforcement officer, which is attached here, explaining your recourse of action. And then we have a copy of the building permit that was tempted. We have a copy of the, again, another, another piece to the building permit describing the above-ground pool, 18 feet in diameter, and that's, there is a plan here. Not sure what part of the page we have.
That's, oh, the assessors' map.
Yes, I'm trying to find your property on this, though.
It's a little bit higher up, there you go.
I highlighted on my sheet, but.
Yeah, the one with the little X in it, Mr. Chair.
So I think it's right here, okay. All right, so I think that might be the last page, it is, so I'm going to stop sharing. If someone wants to go back and reference these, just Okay, so Barbara Gould, I'll open it up to you if you'd like to give us some more information about what you're trying to do, or any other information you may have.
All right, thank you. I am just trying to have an above-ground, 18-foot in diameter swimming pool installed. And I'm asking for a variance because it did not meet the requirements for the distance on the border of my land.
20, 20 feet required for that.
Right, I only have 7.1. But like I say, that is an empty lot back there. It's wooded, and it's not large enough to have any structure built on it, you know, like a house, and so it's not wetlands or anything.
Okay.
That's about it.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the board members and see if they have any questions or anything they would like clarified. Dan Champagne? Would you like to ask any questions at this point?
Thank you. I, no, I just want to state, I appreciate all the paperwork they submitted with this. I'm interested in what other questions the other board members have, because I believe I'm not voting on this, so I just want to be kind of a participant.
Okay, that's fine, Dan, you are able to participate, you just can't vote, but I'll come back to you afterwards in case you have any other questions at that point.
Thank you.
David Silverman?
If I do have a couple of questions. If I could, from the chair to Mary, do we have, when, when there's a variance application, and I don't know why it never dawned on me to ask before, but is there a, a reporting from the tax collector just to make sure that everything's up to date?
It normally is.
I thought so, and I looked through it, and I, I, I couldn't find it.
That wasn't one of the requirements.
You are correct, Mr. Silverman, there normally is, and that is missing here, but if you look on the front page of the building permit application, it does have.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Go through the first page of the variance application?
Of the building.
Building permit.
Building permit application.
It says the tax status is current as of 4/6/21.
Oh, okay.
Right.
The other thing is taking a look at the proposed pool plan on Ms. Gould?
Yes.
Okay. If I'm standing on Westgate Drive, looking at the front of the home.
Yes.
The lot to the left, or what looks like maybe half a lot, what is located there? Is it your leach field?
Yes.
The big section.
The. Chair.
Section of the yard on the left is where all my septic system is.
Do you know how far back, to the back part of the lot, the, the edge of your septic system is?
From the back of the property?
Well, you have 100 feet from front to back.
Right.
So how, how far back do you need to go before you're at the end of the septic system? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Maybe 70 feet, maybe 60, 70 feet, I don't, I don't know. I'm not really sure. The the place, you see where the existing house is?
Yes.
Okay, it's 27 feet in on the lot.
Okay, it, the, the front of the house, yes, I see that, thank you.
All right, about six feet from that, further in, is where the septic opens up to be pumped.
Okay.
But I don't know how far in the system actually goes.
Um, if I could, to Tom through the chair, would you have any knowledge on this property?
I'm familiar with the property. I believe I did the septic system design next door. I had some concerns about the location of the septic system and the components. I'm not sure how often this Gould has the septic system pumped. What that does is it would, she would be able to get to her pumper and have what's called an informal Title V assessment. So what that does is just locates all the septic components where it could be drawn on the, on the plan. Mr. Tivnan, because he knows that this is a septic community, a septic system community, should have known enough to put the septic system and the location on there. That's, and it's relatively inexpensive for, to have that done.
Can I just ask a question?
An engineer, land surveying job, and all of that. It's just a simple Title V inspection.
Are you able to hear that?
Yeah, but I have a question. I don't understand what a Title V has to do with the pool.
It's just, it's not a, it's not a full-blown inspection that we're looking for. What we're looking for is to identify the septic system components, where they are, so that we don't permit you to encro. permit you to encroach upon your septic system and destroy it. If, for some reason, if, let me finish, because if something happens to the pool and it's in close proximity to your septic system, you may be looking at like a $20,000 repair. If we can eliminate that now, we can safeguard that your septic system's not gonna be impacted. That's all I want.
I don't believe the septic system is going to be impacted. If this pool, for some reason, loses all the water, it's gonna flow into the backyard, right where it is. It's not gonna go over left. And I have my septic pumped every two years. And I can prove that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We have to, she has to provide evidence that that's where the septic system is.
Okay.
That's all I'm interested in, just to protect her from making a mistake.
I am really getting a little frustrated as a taxpayer. When I applied for this permit and was denied, I was told I had to get together all this paperwork, which I did right away, I got it into your office right away, it was complete, I think you'll find. Everything that was asked for was in that 19-page document. And I really don't want to delay this any further. I mean, this is getting ridiculous, I wanted this pool in, in May. And now we're looking at maybe the end of July.
Mr. Chair? Yes, I'd like to ask, because I see the building inspectors here in the office, I mean, in the, in the meeting. Through the chair, did the Board of Health have an opportunity to review the application? Just a
The building permit application?
Yes, for the pool.
Then typically, and I would ask Mary, through the chair, to Mary, because Mary would have, when the applications are received, Mary made sure that it goes with what I'll do before I get.
Okay.
So I don't know if the answer, I'd have to ask.
Okay.
So, if I can answer?
Yes, Mary, please.
I think because we knew it needed a variance, that we just denied it and did not have Board of Health review it when it came in. If I could be excused for a moment to go see if I can find a septic plan in the Board of Health office?
Sure.
Is everybody okay with that?
That'd be helpful, should we hold on the meeting?
I would appreciate that, too, thank you.
Is it okay to continue talking?
Go ahead.
Okay, one, one thing I just want to note is, looking at number five on the list of documents required, seems like we have some exception for above-ground pools.
There's what?
If you look at the documents required for, for an appeal.
Yes.
It seems we have an exception for above-ground pools on some of the requirements.
Well, that's one of my other questions I wanted to ask the, the building inspector. Through the chair. The above-ground pools, they have to meet the 20-foot setback in the, at the rear? Or is it a 10-foot?
I, I zone it 22.
Okay. All right, that's, answers my, one of my other questions.
Okay. David, I'm gonna go back to David while we're waiting, did you have any other questions, David Silverman?
Uh, no, and I certainly didn't mean to create a brouhaha, but I wanted to make sure that, that the, the ability to allow the variance is there. So, if the location of the septic system or its components were spread out to a point where the weight of a pool could not go there, that is relevant in my mind.
Okay.
So, I, no, I have no other questions.
Okay, thank you. Tom, I want to go back to you, if you had any other questions.
No, I, I think that some of my questions have to do with offsets and dimensions. And, and, and the building inspector and zoning enforcement officer has, has done his due diligence, I, I just wasn't sure on whether above-ground pools were given a a, a 10-foot instead of 20-foot, but if that be the case, then and I'd like to have a pretty good idea where the septic system is, that's my only other concern, I, again. I do this for a living and all I want to do is just make sure that she doesn't make a mistake.
Okay.
I see way too many times people point, well, if I stand at my kitchen sink, my septic, like, my thing that they pump is here. And it may not necessarily be true. And I have seen what happens when a septic system fails and there's a leach field in the area. What it does is 2,000 or 3,000 gallons of water will go rushing right through the septic system and blow the system out.
Yeah.
I've had that experience twice.
I appreciate your concern, but I, I also am getting a little aggravated with all the delay. You know, I hope that she can find something in the documents there.
What else would we need for proof where our septic system is?
Unfortunately, she's shaking her head no. So what does that mean, Mary?
I don't even have a, it would mean that she has a, probably has an older septic system and we don't have a record of it.
Okay, so.
Let me ask you this, if we get something. Can I ask a question real quick, if you don't mind?
Sure.
If we have the septic pumped every two years and we get something from the company that we have it pumped from, would that suffice, or are you gonna actually make us do a Title V?
I know you were suggesting earlier, Tom, some type of informal Title V inspection.
Exactly, I, I, I use the term Title V loosely because that's a 450-page document that, that we work out of.
But this is not.
But this is not the case, we're not looking for a 17- or an 18-page report. All, all we really want to know is where the septic components are, so that we don't step on them and break them or. And your pumper.
Who do I contact?
I, let me, let me finish, the, your pumper can draw what's called an as-built sketch and tell you exactly where, well, you know, within a, a foot or two of where all the septic components are.
So much more money we're looking at.
Okay.
Who pumps your septic system?
Um, American Septic System, I believe it's called.
Okay.
Any idea what something like that ballpark cost is, Tom?
100 bucks. If you're gonna pump the septic tank, what do they charge, 250 to pump the tank?
Yes, yes.
When was, when was the last time it was pumped?
We just had it done, like, that long ago.
Last year, five years ago?
No, it was, uh, within the last year.
Okay, if you call them up, he probably has it already in his records.
All right.
Where all or most of the components are, and he can give you that and probably won't cost you anything.
All right, now who do I deliver this to? Mary?
Yes. Yes.
All right, and then, do I have to have another public hearing, or what?
Well, we I think we probably would have to continue this. But let's, let's talk to the other members and see what other questions we have. I have, I'd like clarification on our, on this sheet that says we have exceptions for the above-ground pools, I don't know if you've seen that, but anyways, do you have any other questions, Tom, or can I go to Al?
No, I, I think everything else, we're all set, I had just a technical, but
Okay.
It's needed, it's dribble.
All right, Al?
Al St. James.
Al St. James.
I same thought, it's, it's Thomas, the virus, showing it on the plan.
I'm sorry, Al, I, I can barely hear you.
Did you pick up the microphone, or?
Is that, that's a microphone in front of you, right?
Close to you.
Oh, all right.
You hear me now?
I can, thank you, I appreciate it.
I have the same thought when I saw the, the plan that the septic wasn't shown, because they, they were saying that was part of the requirement of what they're presenting, why they had a hardship. I don't know if I have a great concern, but I would dread to have seen it on the plan, the location.
Yeah, okay.
I have no other questions.
All right. Steven?
Yes. I got a different thought process on here, if everybody's in agreement. If she comes up with a drawing from her individual that pumps the system where all the components are, delivers that. And Mary? Why can't we vote on, I mean, if we all do agree, that's gonna be the hardship.
The contingency?
Condition the approval.
Yeah, so then that she doesn't have to come back in front of us.
I, I'll, I'll note that, if that's the route we go, sure. Any other thoughts, Steven?
Well, I'm also.
Okay. I just wanted to see if I recorded this information correctly when I looked at your application. The left side, the left side, the west side, that's what we're talking about as far as the septic. But on the right side, the east side, there's not enough space, you, you don't have space there either. And obviously, you wouldn't put it in your front yard.
Right.
What are you planning, when I see on the plan? There, there's a block, i- is this, is this a, an existing deck, or is this something proposed?
Yes, that's, that's a deck.
Okay.
It's existing.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's the life expectancy of this pool?
30 years.
30 years? Okay. All right, I guess I would just ask the board members, looking at the an application, a valid application, number five here talks about a certified plot plan, but it does say, you know, there are, there, it's, it's not just looking for the certified plot plan, it's looking for any, any other dimension setback or any other information pertinent to the relief being sought, but it says except for above-ground pools and storage sheds under 250 feet. Is that for above-ground pools in general, or do those also have to be under 250 square feet? Does anybody know the answer to that? And if I do my math real quick, is it is it radius squared pi, what makes, what's diameter? Because that would be, because if I'm doing my math, that'd be 81 times pi, it'd be real close to 250, but probably just under it.
Pi D.
Oh, pi diameter, okay.
Pi R squared.
Thank you.
The area of pi D is circumference.
Okay, there you go, so it, sort of pi squared.
I, I, I do a shortcut in my head, pi D times point 78.
So, I mean, based, yeah, so I mean, based on this, is there any exception here? Because it's an above-ground pool that we are a little less, and I understand you're, you're concerned about doing it the right way, you're trying to help the applicants, is there any leeway for exception based on the exception that we have listed in our, in our list of documents that have to be provided? I mean, so the applicant did go to the expense of the, the certified plan. Okay, so I'll go back to Dan Champagne, I don't know if you had any, any additional questions?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I do have one question to the applicant. What is currently in that location where you want to put this pool?
Nothing, it's just my backyard grass.
We, we previously had the Intex pool that you can put up and take down.
Okay.
You know, we talked about.
I was just, I was just curious, that's all.
Yeah.
I see I see around object, that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, now I'd like to open it up, I don't know if there's any members of the public that would like to be heard on this. If so, we'd like you to, just, you'd have to state your name and address, and would be, we'd like to hear what you have to say. Okay, there being none. I guess I would ask if there are, if the board wants to entertain a motion to close the public hearing and proceed to a motion on the vote, and if we have contingencies, we would have to add those there. Or if there's any other questions you want to ask?
I have a question, Barbara Gould.
Yes.
Um. Did I hear you say that I wouldn't have to, um, oh, now I lost my train of thought. If I bring in the sketch from the septic people, I wouldn't have to have another meeting scheduled with you in front of the board?
Well, it's something that we're discussing as to whether or not, it would, it would be up to the person when they make the motion, but we're discussing whether we would add a contingency that says we could vote on it tonight, and if approved, one of the contingencies would be it's approved, but, but you would need to bring that in to make it finalized.
That would be really greatly appreciated, okay.
I guess I want to ask, is that a hard requirement, what if she goes to American Septic and they, and, and they have an unreasonable fee they're looking for, for this, or?
Calling over the septic inspector.
I don't think they would, because I've used them for years.
Okay, all right.
You're cool.
Okay, so I think we have to be clear, you know, to give her direction on what she needs to ask for, though. Not sure, it's gotten fully communicated with the remoteness of this, but.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to, to, to kind of chime in, but in terms of discussion, let me pose a hypothetical. And, and I don't know if, if it makes a difference to the members of the board. If the outer edge of the septic system is, say, for example, no more than 50 feet in from the road, so that there's 50 feet of non, for lack of a better term, septic system area. Then, does the board want to allow variance when there is another location for it that can be done without the variance? So I, I just think that that is.
It's an individual thing, but.
Can I just make, excuse me?
I may respond to that.
Sure, the applicant can respond, and then we have Tom that would like to speak.
On that part of our yard. I mean, ideally, there would be room to put a pool there, but there are trees. You know, without cutting a tree down, and honestly, we didn't want it to be so visible, if you will.
From the road.
From the road. So that was our reasoning why we didn't choose that side, I have, I have kids, I have a trampoline in that area, I have a swing set in that area, that would be very hard for us to move. So, because we had the Intex pool that you can take down every year, you know, it just seemed like a, a, a better spot to do the installation for the permanent above-ground, which is why we chose that area in the back.
And, and I, I appreciate that, and I thank you for the explanation. My, my only point being, if, for example, because of trees, the pool physically can't be situated, then that would make a difference in looking at whether to have to deal with a, 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 a variance or simply saying the pool should go someplace else so that it doesn't have to be a variance. So I, I think it's important that, that, that facts like this can be known.
Yeah.
So, you know, if, if your response to me is, it physically can't go in there because of trees. So if, if your response to me is it physically can't go in there because of trees. You know, I, I need to have an understanding, I think the other members of the board need that understanding.
That being said, then yes, it would be very, it would be kind of physically impossible to put it there because of where the tree is located. Unless we were to remove that tree, which. I didn't want to, I like the shade, you know, we like the birds.
I, I certainly don't want to have the environmentalist knocking on my front door because I suggested the trees be cut down.
Right, thank you.
Okay, Tom?
Okay, I, I did take the liberty of doing a drive by. And I found that that little side of the property was unobstructed except for. It looked like one of those swing set slide combination things tucked in the corner and a trampoline. Which. There was adequate space there for the pool depending on where the septic system is. But I, one, one other thing, so as far as availability is spaced, I think it's a, a better setup. And if you're ready, if we're going to encroach on the setback requirements, I think we should be looking at other alternate. Before we just go ahead and alternate sites before we allow this to happen.
Okay.
One thing I'd like to mention also is that. Just because. If property owner chooses not to develop his land, does not mean that he loses his rights.
Oh, right.
You know, if the guy behind them or the person behind them decided not to build, he doesn't relinquish all his rights to the, a butter that's already built.
No, no, but that butter was notified of this and.
Well, I understand that, but I, I just hate to see people misconstrue the justification that he doesn't build on it so he doesn't care.
Right.
That may not necessarily be true.
Yeah.
I think that I'd like to know where the septic system is, again, I'm going to reiterate that. I'd like to know where the septic system is and I would like to see that just in case there's an alternate site, let's investigate that.
Okay, so can I ask that?
Hold on, hold on one second, man.
And the offset requirement to the bill through the board, through the chairman, through the building inspector. For an above ground pool offset to the house is ten feet, am I correct? Five feet for an above ground pool. Okay, so my other concern and another statement that I did have was that if we're going to insult. A property line versus whatever else, we should be. The owner should take as much as they need to for their own first before they start encroaching on the neighbor, so.
So based on this plan, I guess the question is how far is the pool from the house?
Right.
The proposed pool to the applicant, the proposed pool, do you know what the distance is between, it's not marked on the plan? It, it appears?
It's about eight feet.
Eight feet, okay. So, okay, so I guess what the comment here from Tom is that if five feet is allowed, could move three foot closer.
And how about changing dimensions of the pool?
So.
So. Just a quick question, so when you're proposing the other side, if, when we find out where the septic is, right? The footage from, like on the sides, I don't remember what they said it had to be on, not going into the backyard, but like to the side where our neighbor's fence is. On that side where the septic is, how far, like what, what's the footage on each side, I guess?
Fifteen or twenty five? Side setback on our, our three? Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Fifteen foot from the side.
Okay.
Okay.
So then if it would be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to say that I will get the septic. Information into you, I do not want to put the pool on the west side. Because if we had the additional fifty feet. There not only is the swing set and the trampoline there, but there are two trees that would have to be removed to put the pool in there.
Yeah, not just.
And not just one tree, there's two. So that's why I do not want it over there, that's why I want it in the backyard.
And honestly, it's, it's the hardship of moving that trampoline. I, you know, there, there are two females that live in this house and for us to try to take that apart would be extremely difficult. You know, just to give you guys an idea of why we chose where we did. You know, and then obviously, you know, I mean, it might sound kind of selfish, but I mean, then, you know, if I were to have a pool on that side of the house, I would absolutely want to fence the whole area. Because I did not want it to be seen from the street.
It's the privacy.
It's the privacy thing.
I, I. I had those same thoughts that.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Is behind the house, I can understand that, I, I know I had a tree down myself this past year, it was a thousand dollars or more for one tree.
Correct.
I, I kind of see that as an undue burden. But we're at a, at a point here where it's up to the board members to make a motion with what they. Feel they want to do, I'm not allowed to make a motion. And we'll have to work out what the details are that we're asking, is it a, and I'm not sure if Tom, you're willing to go forward at all without having the information or if a contingency is, is acceptable. And I don't know what the other board members are thinking, but, but that could come out in a motion. Unless there's other discussion.
Steve seems to have some.
Okay.
Yeah, I got a few. One thing, the board's not here to turn around and. Bestowed onto the public added expenses to remove two trees, dig up the roots, it's going to cost them more to get rid of those trees and put in that pool. Then plus landscaping on top of that. When you look at the other part of it is that putting the pool in the back behind the house, out of sight, out of mind, people drive by, they're not going to see you, they're swimming, whatever, you know? So I understand that part. You get a deck that's right not too far from it, so you, it makes sense that you're going to utilize a deck and you got the pool. So it doesn't take far to walk down the stairs, jump in the pool, come back out, go into the deck, and it's just kind of common sense. So I believe that, you know, we're not here to add. Grief to the people financially. Because. Say we want to relocate this pool in an area, but now it's going to cost them a lot more money. And. Even if it's a language of it, you know, it's Westgate Drive, where the pole is, the people could drive by, slow down, they'll catch you, you're swimming, I mean, I, I wouldn't want that anyway. And if we go into. Into the categories, number five. It's a gray area, it's not written in there, it says in any other information permanent to the relief being sought. Except for above ground pools, or any other information is what? There's nothing listed on any other information. So they didn't ask for. The plan where the septic system is.
I mean, it's a. To answer that, I think Tom is again trying to do the right.
Oh, I, I understand and I agree that, my opinion, if they could get exactly where that system is located, that's good enough for me. You know, in future, I think they should type that in there that it's mandatory for them to get that. You can't, we can't assume that the. Engineer is going to turn around, he's going to put that in, he's probably thinking the same thing, this is just above ground pool, it's not stationary. So in five years, you know, you could end up selling your house, leaving if people don't like a pool and get rid of it. So it's all like a permanent structure back there. But, you know, I, I just feel that she doesn't like work, get the information. Bring that into, to Mary and go from there.
Okay, so I'm not sure what the board wants to do, but we'd have to start with a motion. And. We can amend it or what have you, as we normally do. Someone needs to start the.
Well, make a motion that she turns around and gets the documentation needed to satisfy all of us where that septic system is, all the components from the house. To the system, to the leach field. And. I think that'd be. Followed up on the concrete evidence.
So I, I just heard you ask for septic location, but how's your motion as opposed, is that your motion? As far as a variance is concerned, or?
If we want to say, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Is to, he wants to grant the variance for the relief of. Whatever is twelve, twelve point three feet from the back of property line.
Thirteen.
Or thirteen feet from the back property line, wants to grant the variance for the pool on the condition that. A septic system as built sketch. Is provided before the permit is issued. To ensure that the septic system is not going to be interfered with, with the pool.
Okay.
Okay, so is that your motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, second. All right, is there any other, oh, I'm sorry. I think we need to close the public hearing first.
I think you can close it second.
You can close it second?
Correct.
Okay, fair enough. All right, so we have the motion in a second, is there any other discussion?
Uh, yes. Mr. Chairman, through the chair to Tom, so who would make the determination that what is filed? Is sufficient such that the septic system will not be. Potentially in danger or however you, you wish to have it worded?
I would suggest that the, the Board of Health agents have an opportunity to, to review. Mr. Tivnan's survey plan and the Title V location sketch plan. And comment that it's either is or is not going to impact, or it is or is not a danger to. The septic system. I leave it up to the building inspector, I mean, the Board of Health agent to review that.
Thank you for that clarification, I, 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 I agree with your, with your assessment and intent.
And how do we engage them to do that, is that? Someone would have to talk to them once this.
Well, Mrs. Gould would, would present the. The, the as-built sketch.
Yes.
Because the applicant would provide the as-built sketch.
Yes.
To, to Mary.
Right.
And Mary would then, we could actually send a. A, a quick memo or a note to the, to the Board of Health agent to please review this. Application for an above ground pool and just. Comment on whether. The placement of the pool is a day, is a threat to the existing septic system. And if it come back as a negative, it's not a threat, if it's greater than five or 10 feet away, then it's not a, it's not a problem.
All right, so we had our motion, we had a second, I'm going to call for the vote, David?
David Silverman votes aye.
Tom Purcell?
Tom Purcell votes aye.
Al Saint Germain?
Voting on the original motion or is it? This other part?
Well, I look at it that it's, it's the original motion with Tom's clarification.
Okay with that, Al, or?
Okay with what we're talking, I just don't know if I'm okay with the motion the way it's set. Not my green. But I want it as part of the motion.
I think we're trying, we're, we're trying to get to a, a point that's acceptable for the applicant. Without making, I mean, just making sure we cover ourselves.
I just want to make sure the motion covers that.
Well, we already had the motion that she had to present that and then.
So we're amending the motion? Original motion?
We're amending. We already had the motion stating that, that document had to be produced, now on the backend, we're just, well, I guess, okay. I guess we technically do because the second contingency is that we have to have the Board of Health. Review. Favorable. So, okay, so I guess we're going to have.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend. And we second to amend the emotion. Okay, so I'm going to call in a vote to amend the motion so that we have the Board of Health review added to the initial motion. David?
Aye, David Silverman, aye.
Tom?
Thomas Purcell, aye.
Al?
Al Saint Germain, aye.
Steven?
Steve Bogman, aye.
People flash, aye, okay, now we'll go to the vote on the initial motion to grant the thirteen feet of relief. Variance based on the information presented in the two contingencies, the septic system as-built sketch from their septic pumper and Board of Health review. David?
David Silverman votes aye.
Thomas Purcell, votes aye.
Al Saint Germain, votes aye.
Steve Bogman, votes aye.
Flash votes, yes. Okay, so to the applicant, there is a 20-day appeal period after everything is completed, but the first thing is. The, the two contingencies, we need to get that plan submitted to Mary and then we have to have a favorable review from the Board of Health.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay.
So when we turn that paperwork in, is there like a ballpark timeframe? I, I just need to let people that are installing the pool, I think, give them kind of an idea of what we're looking at so I don't lose my, my installation date.
Well, I think that review should go fairly quickly, I don't want to. Put, confirm anything.
I mean, I have it for July.
Well, I'm going to say maybe a week is a reasonable time for that review, but then there's the 20-day appeal period where anybody could appeal this decision. And that's after it gets, the paperwork gets processed, so July is going to be.
So like twenty five.
Due in Asia.
Yeah, I guess the question is how quickly is it going to take you to get that sketch? If you can get that in a week.
Monday.
Okay.
Well, Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday we'll have it.
Not Sunday?
I, I could do that for you.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so thank you.
Don't forget to.
Thank you so much.
So, okay, so we're going to vote to close the public hearing. We need a motion.
Second.
Second by Tom Purcell and a vote to, vote to close the public hearing, Tom Purcell.
Tom Purcell vote, yes, affirmative.
Al?
Al Saint Germain, yes.
I vote yes and David Silverman.
David Silverman votes yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have our next public hearing. This is 59 Coburg Avenue, application for appeal. I'm going to have Steven, we're going to do a. Steven will read the public legal notice and then we'll take a roll call.
Board of Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing Notice, please take notice that the Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals. Will hold a remote public hearing using the Zoom application on Thursday, May 27, 2021 at 7:30 PM to consider the appeal application of Casey Fleming, Kevin Frederick. Cabanel and Robert King for property owned by the applicants located, located at 59 Coburg Ave, Oxford, Mass. Access of map 33D parcel D08 in our three residential zoning district. The applicant requests an appeal of the zoning enforcement office's order to remove any and all insect and reptiles at the property and to cease and desist. and to cease and desist all commercial activities, including but not limited to propagating, processing, raising, and breeding reptiles without a special permit from the Oxford Board of Selectment in violation of Chapter Three, Section Two, Home Occupations, and the Chapter Three, Section three point eight of the Oxford zoning bylaws. The application can be viewed in the office of the town clerk or land management during normal office hours. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the place, date, and time designated. Submit written comments to the board before the date of the hearing. See masspublicationnotices.org for legal notice.
You have to read these two pieces.
To the applicants of the Zoning Board of Appeals, you are hereby advised of the following provisions of the Oxford zoning bylaws. Appeals to the Zoning Board of Appeals must be filed within twenty days from the date or order of decision which is being appealed, specifying the grounds thereof. In accordance with Chapter forty-eight, Section fifteen of the Mass General Laws, you are hereby advised that any person agreed by the decision of the board relative to this matter must file an appeal as provided for Section seventeen of said Chapter forty-eight within twenty days after the date of the filing of this decision in the office of the town clerk.
Thank you, Stephen.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm going to take a roll call. I believe there's one board member that has a conflict is going to recuse. So I believe we have Tom Purcell participating.
Present, Tom Purcell.
Al? Al Saint Germain, present.
Al Saint Germain.
Steve Alcorn is present.
People flash, present, David Silverman?
David Silverman, present.
And Dan Champagne?
Dan Champagne, present, and I have recused myself from this.
Okay, Dan, so you won't be able to participate. You're certainly welcome to listen, but you won't be able to ask questions. So the way this is going to work, I'm going to go through the packet that we received from the applicant. Then I'll give the applicant an opportunity to give us any and other information they have, to explain their situation. The board members will ask questions. And then at some point, we'll open it up to any anyone else that's on the Zoom call or in public that would like to be heard. So why don't we start by going through the package? We're going to share.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I may, through the chair to our esteemed town council. It looks like Attorney Costanza, you're, are you muted?
I I am muted.
Okay, you're you're not now. The question I had for you, if you could assist me in this, this this appeal is a de novo appeal? So all facts have to be found by us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I I I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I'm not a lawyer. Can you explain what that, what the process is on that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, i- if I may, I I think Mr. Silverman was asking if the board has to be the finder of a fact, so to say, in this matter. And 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 that is your job. Your job is to hear the facts, hear the arguments being raised, and then apply your zoning bylaw to make a determination as to whether the cease and desist order should should be upheld or whether you're going to grant the appeal.
Okay, so just to clarify, you're saying that even though we read something in the packet, we need to bring that forward? We need to have that as something we've asked about?
You you can make a determination if you believe it and and if you see it in the packet and you believe it's to be true, you could find that to be fact. If there are questions, you can ask the applicant for clarifying facts, for further facts, for any information that you need to make your determination.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we have the application here. Is that too big? Is that not enough? The page being displayed, is that still readable at that point there?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I can see that, okay.
Okay, so we have, this is the front page of the application. We have the applicant's names, Casey Fleming, Kevin Frederick, Carbonell, Robert King, three owners of the property, fifty-nine Coburg Ave. This is a a request to overturn the cease and desist order from the zoning enforcement officer. They've attached an Exhibit A. It's like the same page again. We have the legal notice that Stephen read. This is the, so I thought this was interesting. This is the document that we normally show with the tax statuses. And the note at the bottom says that the owner submitted the page to the tax collector for signature and had been told it was signed off on and sent to the appropriate department's land management. But they were not allowed to obtain a copy unless requested through town council. Council for owners has requested such but has not received as of the filing, so I guess we'll have a question of whether that's current. This is the Exhibit A that the applicant's attached, a multi-page document stating their rebuttal or their their opinion based on the cease and desist. See, we have believe the next, the next document would be the quitclaim deed. Probably was purchased in two thousand eighteen. And now we have a blow-up of the probably from the assessors map, maybe, or the property is highlighted here in gray on the map. It's number fifty-nine. We have the butters list certified by the town. I believe it goes over to the next page. We have a copy of the cease and desist order from the zoning enforcement officer from April second twenty twenty-one. And I believe we have some, these are copies of printed shipping labels. There's a few pages of these. I believe the applicant wanted to show that their that their business, that they ship from their business, and maybe the dates from which which they shipped these items. And I think we have a copy of this was their their incorporated name, Contrived Incorporated. I believe this showed it was two thousand eighteen, was it? September eighteenth, twenty twenty. It looks like they received this. We had this is a little different. Okay, so then we had a series of emails here. This was March third from Casey Fleming to Mr. Lanciani. There's, I believe there's others here, March fifth. Again, to Mr. Lanciani. There's another one, if these are in order, March fourth to the Oxford Board of Health. Another letter to the Oxford Animal Control dated March fourth. And then we have some of the paperwork. This was a return of administrative inspection warrant. I believe this was required after the administrative search warrant. They were, they had to report back to the to the court on what the findings were of the of the visit. That's the last on the scanned document here, but I have a couple more pages in my packet. I have the the administrative search warrant, and I have the application for the administrative inspection warrant and an affidavit in support of the application for the administrative inspection warrant. So I don't know if anybody had any questions on those, but if not, I would let me get off of the sharing and welcome the applicant to share, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, before we turn it over to the applicant, I obviously I'm not there, so I can't see who might or might not be there, but is the the building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer in the meeting room?
He is. He is the only person other than the board members and and Mary.
Okay.
Videoographer.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, okay. All right, so I would, I would the applicant, is it Mr. King? Who is speaking on behalf of the applicant?
And no, members of the board. My name is Attorney Chrissy Pacula, and I represent the owners of fifty-nine Coburg.
Okay. What what should we call you, Attorney Pacula?
You can call me Chrissy. I don't mind.
Okay. How do you spell your name?
C H R I S S Y.
Last name?
Pacula, P I K U L A.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. All right, so Attorney Pacula, would you like to talk to us about the application, or do you have any additional information for us?
Sure, I I guess I really want to start off with what questions do you have, because I pretty much laid everything out, I think, in that Exhibit A, which which supports the overturning of this decision.
Well, I can open it up to the board members, and they may have individual questions. Not sure what they will ask, but we can find out if we'd like to go there.
Yeah, I I I think I'd like that.
Okay. All right. David, would you like to begin?
Well, I I I have a lot, so I mean, maybe we should all, you know, take turns.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking the same thing. If it gets too long, you know, maybe we'll we'll cut it off and let others ask, and then we could come back to if you have additional questions, but we probably should start somewhere.
All right, so starting off with how many, what is the square foot area in the building?
So I, what does that, what part of the appeal is that going towards? Because I don't know if that would be relevant at this point in time.
So it it's your position that it's not relevant what percent of the property is being used for commercial purposes?
So at this point in time, I, yes, I do, because if you take a look at Mr. Lanciani's decision, he doesn't indicate how he arrived at that figure. And additionally.
Attorney Pacula?
Yes.
We're supposed to be finding the facts.
Yes.
And if if a relevant fact involves the percentage of use of the floor space for commercial purposes, then asking the questions about how big is the place, what's the square foot area? I I find that highly relevant.
Well, I don't see how you could make the determination as to what the actual percentage is if we don't know how Mr. Lanciani arrived at that figure.
Whether he used an abacus or 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 a powerful computer. I I I don't see how that's relevant to whether we need to have knowledge of the percent area that's being used for commercial purposes.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is that we don't know how he arrived at that figure, so how are we supposed to argue against whether or not?
So you do not want, so you do not want the board to know the size of the the property that's there? I just want to make sure so that the record is clear.
Absolutely. Let me just ask my client, what is the square footage of the property?
Yeah, it should be in the packet from the from the assessor's office.
It should be in the packet from the assessor's office, is what my clients are telling me.
Yeah.
So David, just to clarify, you're asking for the square footage of the residence?
Yes, yeah, yes, the square footage of the residence, and then we can get into what the square footage is of the property being used for commercial purposes. I I I think that's relevant to one of the first issues that was brought up by the building inspector or one of the first violations.
Yeah, I don't see anything from the assessor's office here. I mean, the assessor's office would have it, but I didn't see it in in our packet.
That that's fine. I have my clients looking it up right now, so we'll be able to answer that question for you, but I still want to reiterate that I don't know how we're supposed to challenge that decision when we don't know how he arrived at that figure.
But if we're, if we're finding the facts right now, then really it's it's a matter of us trying to understand whether the square foot area being used is appropriate.
So wouldn't Mr. Lanciani have put that in his order?
Well, that, I believe, and and to to town council, I believe that was one of the violations that were noted by the building inspector.
Yes, but wouldn't Mr. Lanciani, to support his decision, indicate the square footage in his order?
You're you're fighting about an issue that doesn't be irrelevant.
I'm just saying.
No, and I'm just saying, you're fighting about an issue that isn't relevant to what's going on here. We're trying to determine the facts.
I think that's.
Your your position is that the facts are relevant. You know, you need to help us here.
I I just indicated my clients are looking it up. I will answer that question, but I am just restating my position that I do believe that's relevant, that it should have been in the order.
Right, David, maybe you could go to a second question while we're waiting for that to be looked up.
I I I'll I'll move on. I have a number of others, but I first want to have my my hands around the issue of what the square foot area is of the commercial purpose for the property.
Would you like me to move on to another member?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I I and I'll come back to you later.
Okay, thank you. All right, Stephen?
When I read the report, it said that the garage, the garage in the house for the cat. And I want to understand is totally used for a holding area.
You got a question to the applicant?
Yes.
Sorry, Attorney Pacula, did you hear that?
No, I'm sorry. What, could you really repeat that? I heard the garage is, yes, used.
Yep, you have a dwelling
Yes.
and attached garage.
Yes.
All right, so in the papers I read, the garage, supposedly houses all the reptiles and the turtles.
Correct.
Okay, so you got that that whole garage, whatever the square footage is there, has been used for commercial. Then probably understand that the cellar in the dwelling is also used as an area of reproduction or housing the reptiles. Is that is that correct?
I don't believe so. It's it's strictly regulated to the garage.
Nothing in the cellar.
Oh, the turtles live in the cellar, but that's not part of the commercial business.
How many turtles do we have?
I I don't think that matters.
It does.
It does.
Yes, no one does.
How so?
It's relevant to the facts that this board needs to find.
Okay.
I don't think it's relevant to the turtles there are.
Turtles, turtles produce salamel, miller poisoning. So it's a health hazard to begin with, depending on how many you have.
Are you the health inspector?
No, we could, we could go, we could go all night. I mean, we could go on with this.
I know, I'm trying to.
I'm just trying to.
You know.
I'm just trying to.
I can tell from the last hearing that, you know, things tend to drift off, so I think we need to focus.
The turtles are mentioned. The turtles are mentioned in the report. So it is part of the whole case here, what we're talking about. Let me get a little further. You have the bearded dragons, and you got the turtles. And now how is all the waste being disposed of from these animals?
How how is?
Where's the waste go from these reptiles when they're cleaned?
How how is that relevant as well?
Well, then we're talking another health issue.
Because, so, no, this is not a health code hearing, though. This is a zoning violation here.
No, no, we could, we could keep on going here.
Yeah.
So then how about? Wait a minute. Wait a minute, wait a minute, and I'm sure that all these animals, a hundred percent of them don't live, so there's going to be a per, a, a percentage of them that do die.
Okay, but you're exceeding your authority right now, this is a health.
No, I'm asking you because it is all intertwined, intertwined into everything.
This is a zoning appeal, the topic is zoning, not health.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, how do you figure?
Uh, yes, Attorney Costanzo?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, the zoning bylaw does provide as far as home occupi- occupations, that no home occupation may be permitted that creates a hazard to person or property. And so, questions about public health and hazards to persons or property are, in my opinion, relevant, um, and it is a proper question for a board member to ask.
All right, may I have my client speak to this?
Sure.
All right, RJ King is going to, uh, turn his screen on, he is right next to me.
All right, Mr. King?
Uh, yes, yes, yes. Ooh. Sorry about that, give me just a moment.
It's all right, we had the same thing happen here earlier.
Uh, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Um, so that, this was the question regarding waste management?
Yes.
Um, the, the amount of waste produced by bearded dragons is very, very small, so it goes out in our municipal waste, or not, well, our trash service, it's, it's a very small amount of waste.
Would it be consist, uh, constitute small waste when supposedly you had two hundred of them?
Well, so to put this in perspective, you know, each dragon might produce a tablespoon of waste a day. So, we're talking about, I mean, you have to understand that these are very small animals, um, Christine, do you think I should?
No, that's fine. Yeah.
All right, um, I mean, if it's okay with the board, I had kind of a statement that I'd prepared, that's kind of, um, a little brief to give some context, um, that hopefully would, um, help give them some perspective, is that all right, Chair?
Uh, yes, this was originally opened up to the applicants to, you know, let us know the information they had, or to state your case, so I would think it's relevant, yes.
All right, uh, good evening, my name is Robert King, I have a co-interest in the property and the matters at hand. The property we have, at the property, we have a business involving the breeding, raising, and selling bearded dragons, bearded dragons are reptiles native to Australia, which eat live insects and fresh vegetables. They grow to approximately twenty inches long, and are a popular pet due to their ease of care and friendly demeanor. They live in a special, they live in specially made habitats in our garage, and we have some outdoor pens for them when weather permits. We breed the dragons and raise their offspring, handling them daily to train them to be acclimated to human interaction. We market the offspring to customers across the continental United States for purchase over the internet, with the dragons arriving at their final homes via overnight express service and insulated and padded boxes specifically for shipping reptiles. No customers are permitted to visit the property, and we do not publicize our address. Um, so, the dragons, they're only twenty inches long, these are, they're small animals, you know, so the two hundred dragons, you know, would be two hundred tablespoons, you know, so we're, you know, in volume terms, talking about something, you know, that could fit in size of gallon-sized container.
You're talking about the waste?
The waste, yes.
Okay.
And that's per day?
Yes, you know, so we have a, um, I don't remember the exact, I want to say it's a, it's either sixty, sixty-gallon, um, trash service that's removed weekly. It does, it's, it's so negligible that it doesn't really affect our trash service.
So does that waste go into, uh, a regular, uh, say, like, uh, the local trash companies? Or does it, uh?
Great Green Ben, or?
Yeah, uh, we, we have service with LeBlanc, so it, you know, so it goes into plastic bags, like any other household waste, is wrapped up and goes out with the trash. It, it's, it's, you know, it's like if we are a cat at home, you know, you throw its litter in the trash, and it goes out with the rest of the trash.
And how about any, uh, animals that do die, what do you do with those?
Uh, like most people, when, if you lose a pet, you know, you, you tend to bury it on your property, it's not a, thankfully, it's not a particularly frequent occurrence for us. They, they generally live to six or eight years old, so you wouldn't expect there to suddenly be a, a mass number of animals needing, you know, burial.
How old are they born, by egg or by, uh?
Uh, these are reptiles, so they're, they're, um, they hatch from eggs.
Well, separate. Okay, thank you, um, Al?
Yeah, just, the, Al Sainte Man. The turtles, the turtles are household pets, as I say. The turtles are household pets, are they part of the?
The turtles are not part of the business.
They're not part of the business, the pets of the owners of the house.
He's asking if they're pets. He's asking. He's asking if they're pets of the owners of the house? The turtles?
Yes, yes, the, the turtles are pets, and they belong to the owners of the house.
And how many turtles are there?
Again, I don't think it's relevant, but how, how many turtles? A- approximately fifteen adults.
And, uh, so if you're, if you're saying fifteen adults, how many, um, non-adult turtles are there?
Hold on one moment. There's about twenty-five, however, these are customary household pets.
So the forty turtles are, are the household pets?
Yes.
But David, did you want to ask any other questions, or?
Yeah, uh, yes, actually, Mr. Chairman, if I may, thank you.
And I, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I do have the square footage for you, it's four thousand five hundred and thirty-five feet, and that's pursuant to your assessor records.
I'm sorry, Attorney Pacula, it, it, um, four thousand five hundred forty-five square feet?
Thirty-five.
I, I apologize, thank you.
That, that, that's directly from the assessor's website.
So that must, that must include maybe the basement and the garage as well?
That's the total square footage.
Okay.
Now, i- is it total square footage, or is it term total, uh, usable squ- uh, square footage, or livable, I, I'm not sure how the, how the regulation speaks to it, Attorney Costanzo, can you comment? Am I not, Attorney Costanzo, can you hear me?
I'm sorry, yes, I was moving the, the mouse, it got caught, um, so are, are you speaking to the regulation?
Uh, yes.
Uh, through, through you, Mr. Chair, so the, the bylaw provides that no, uh, home occupancy can use more than twenty-five percent of the net floor area of the dwelling.
Now, so net floor, so, um, uh, i- if the basement isn't the finished basement, that would not be, uh, that, that would not be included in the equation?
What do you mean, the, not the finished basement?
I guess the question is, that's, I, I'm sorry, David, if I could, I think what he's asking is, the, the, if the forty-five hundred square feet includes the garage, the basement, and the floors of the residence, is all of that counted toward, would the twenty-five percent count towards all of those areas, or only to the livable parts of the residence? Or, and or garage, or?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yes.
I mean, is it a finished basement, or?
It does, it, it does say, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have the same question, um, in the, uh, in the regulation, it states that, uh, no more than twenty-five percent of the net floor area, and I'm looking for a definition of what net floor area is.
I think that's what David's asking.
And that's exactly what Dave's asking, too. Um, and I, again, either town council, or, uh, Mr. Lanciaani, if they can provide with definition of la- of net square.
Net floor.
Net floor area is, uh, that might help us, uh, get a better picture of what a thou- what the twenty-five percent really is, is the twenty-five percent of, I find it hard to believe that you have four thousand square feet of living space on a, on a property on, on Quobog, yeah, that's a monster house. This tells me it's probably in the garage, the attic space, and then the cellar, and, and, uh, and half of the backyard, or patio outside.
There's not stairs.
Yeah, so, so we can leave that as something we need clarification on, but?
Twenty-five hundred square feet is a pretty good-sized house in Ox, four thousand, I don't know how many there are, that are four thousand.
All right, so Attorney Costanzo, what we're trying to determine, and I'm not sure we'll get that right now, is what, what is net, what does, what constitutes net floor area?
But, Mr. Chair, so your bylaws don't define the term net flaw area, I would say that it is the, the total flaw area of the, the usable portions of the property, so that would be the house and the garage, including the basement. Um, however, that is a matter for you and, um, the board to determine in your discretion.
All right, David, did you want to continue with other questions?
Um, well, I, I would like the applicant to speak to whether the, the raising of bearded dragons in the pot, and, and sale of them, and the uh, raising of turtles, and whether there is or isn't the sale of them, I, if that, uh, uh, is agriculture, uh, and if so, how?
It is agriculture, so agriculture is defined as the raising of livestock. And the Stich case, which I've cited in my brief, which is attached into Exhibit A, defines livestock as any animal that's raised or bred for pleasure or use, including commercial use. And this property is zoned agricultural, well, I'm sorry, agricultural is allowed in the residential zoning. So, there's, there's no way that it could be regulated by a special permit uh, pursuant to the Dover Amendment, which is Mass. General Law forty A, Section Three.
So livestock to you is the raising of any animals for food or pleasure?
Food, pleasure, commercial use, breeding and raising, and that's, that's not my definition, that's the Massachusetts Court's definition.
Um, oh, uh, uh, through the chair to Attorney Costanzo, could you, uh, comment on, um, your sister's uh, reference to that being the law on agriculture?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, um, the, the Massachusetts Zoning Act, Chapter forty A, Section Three, does provide an exemption to agricultural uses. That statute, however, was amended in two thousand and six, um, because there was no definition of agriculture previously. In the amendment in two thousand and six, it was added that agriculture shall meet agriculture as defined in Chapter one twenty-eight of Section one A, um, and that that statute defines, um, agriculture as the raising of livestock, including horses, it talks about the keeping and breeding of poultry, swine, cattle, and other domestic animals used for food purposes, um, the case cited by Attorney Pacula, it predates that change, uh, there is no case that is directly on point in the state of Massachusetts that speaks to reptiles. However, there is, um, a case in Maryland that says the breeding, raising, and selling of reptiles is not commercial agriculture.
Well, I, I will just point out that Maryland law has no bearing here in Massachusetts.
Silverman?
Um, I, I'll, if you, the chair could come back to me, um, I, I would yield to, um, uh, anyone else that has some questions.
All right, I haven't, Tom hasn't had a chance on Purcell.
Okay, um, I've, I've got, uh, a few questions, um, or, and, and, uh, comment as far as some of my research. As far as the ag- agamid lizards, or the dragon lizard, uh, according to Massachusetts requirement, there is no permitting required to, for keeping or any, any handling of those animals.
Correct.
Um, regarding the turtles, I, I, I do take exception that, um, there is a restriction on turtles, um, although there's no permit required until you get to, um, one hundred turtles, or eggs, or combination thereof. So, with the exception of, there are certain turtles, or turtle categories that, uh, that permits are required, that would be tortoises, spotted tortoises, a spotted turtle, uh, red-eared sliders, those are all require state permit, or permits, according to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Turtles up to a hundred turtles and or eggs of of, uh, any species, um, do not require a permit, up to, that's one of the things that leads to the relevance of of asking you how many turtles they do have, and it doesn't matter whether it's kept for personal use, or whatever, uh, or for, for commercial.
And, could you, could you, that reference to that statute or regulation?
I didn't write down, uh, specifically where I saw it, I did see it, I did read it today, uh, when I was looking at keeping of animals according to, uh, Massachusetts, uh, general law. And, uh, there, again, there, there is a, a, a limit on the number of turtles and or eggs. So you can have, uh, twenty or thirty breeders, and if they lay, I don't know how many eggs turtles lay, uh, the indication is it's copious amount of, of, of eggs, but, I, again, I'm not going to get into a debate there.
I can comment that they're very slow breeders.
They don't run fast, either.
No.
Uh, but, uh, again, it's a, it, it is a pertinent question, uh, to support a decision. And I guess one of the other things that we're charged with is, we're charged with conducting an investigation, not relying on necessarily what this guy said, or that guy said, or, uh, we're given, we're charged with trying to uh, get to the bottom of gathering all the facts that we can, so we can render a decision at our level.
Um. I agree, but I, I wouldn't call it an investigation.
Well.
Public hearing.
It's a search for the facts, let's put it that way, it's a search for the fact, if that's not an investigation, I don't know what it is, but, uh, again, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't get into the vernacular of, of, uh, uh, of, of your side of the, the viewpoint.
Your fact-finding.
And that's what we're trying to do. Um. There were other things, I have, uh, some questions on their food supply, uh, the, the, propose the animals' food supply. Uh, they're talking about storing of, and, and, uh, insects and other food materi- other material that the animals might eat. Now, the, in, the insects, my, my question is, the insects, are they live or dead?
The insects are live, however, they are non-invasive insects, and they are covered with netting. So, they do not roam around the house, they are confined to an area, and they are only removed from their, from their box when they're feeding.
Okay, you do have, uh, according to some of the feed material that's there, uh, it, it includes cockroaches. Cockroaches are some of the food supply, uh, according to the information we received, there are cockroaches. Am I correct?
I don't believe so, hold on one moment. Yep, RJ's going to explain exactly what types of insects there are.
Okay. Um, so regarding the insects, the insects we have are not household cockroaches. They're, uh, they're called dubia roaches. They're a tropical species. They cannot breed below approximately, um, eighty or eighty-five degrees. And, um, like if they es- escape their enclosure, they're.
The recording has stopped.
I'm sorry, was the recording just stopped?
What it sounded like. We're checking.
Oh, my, um, my battery died on my laptop.
No, I'm, I'm still recording. So our videographer that, uh, records us for the town is.
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay. My laptop battery died, so, uh, we're still recording.
Um, okay, so if I may continue, uh, dubia roaches, they're from Argentina. Um, they can't survive in this, in this climate. Um, they, um, they need to be in, in their native environment to actually continue to propagate. So we, you know, we purchase some, we keep them in containers and, um, we feed them off as necessary. We also have, um, a breed of, um, they're very similar to mealworms. They're called super worms. Um, they also can't persist outside of, um, a controlled environment. Um, so if they escape, you know, within a, a matter of, of days, you know, they're, they're going to pass. Uh, we also purchase crickets. Um, I don't know the specific species, but they, again, it's not invasive. They, they'll pass if they aren't fed, you know, within a, a few days. Did you have additional questions about the insects?
Well, that's, that was my concern was, uh, live insects and if they're, um, any of them are indigenous to this area. And if they, if they, if they escape, uh, could they find a way to thrive?
No.
Become an invasive species. That's one of my concerns as far as the, the feed or the, the food supply. For the reptiles.
Uh, dubia roaches are actually, the, you're not allowed to import them into states like Florida because it's sufficiently warm there for them to survive out in the wild. But here in this climate, they're, they won't last long.
Okay. That answers one question. The next question I have is, uh, temperature control of, uh, of the, uh, of the animals, what are you using for temperature control? Uh, and some of their bedding media that they're using. Uh, using infrared lamps, are you using, uh, indirect heat? Are you, uh, using fans or or what to, to keep the animals to, uh, uh, because I know that they're, they're cold-blooded animals. Am I correct? So you're going to have to keep them warm at some point, depending on the time of the year.
Yes, yeah. So bearded dragons require several hours of basking around, um, just above a hundred degrees, um, per day. And so we have infrared bulbs specifically for use as heat lamps for, um, for reptiles. And, um, you know, especially this time of year, we only need twenty-five watt heat lamps in order to, um, to produce that one hundred degree basking spot. So each, each enclosure that has animals in it will have, um, one or maybe a couple of different basking spots in different areas of the enclosure for the for the reptiles to bask.
Okay, now, as far as, uh, uh, the safety, uh, now your, your, your bedding material. Uh, am I correct in saying that it's, uh, it's usually a chip stock of some type or leaves and in, uh, straw or mulch or, uh, what is their bedding?
Uh, for the, for the bearded dragons that, uh, they primarily have paper, uh, we have soil in some of their enclosures, um, that we use.
Okay, and has the fire department, uh, been able to inspect or to comment on on the use of the heat lamps with, with combusti- with the combustible material? The reason why I ask that is I have a background in that and I've had, uh, I've been involved in a couple of house fires where uh, people have used heat lamps improperly and have had house fires or.
Yeah, the, the fire department did perform inspection. I, I believe it might have been included in your packet. Um, so I'm sure you're aware of that. Uh, as part of that inspection, we, um, removed all of that leaf litter material um, from those enclosures.
I think that's about all I have right now, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask a few questions. So I think I heard you say that you keep, the, the bearded dragons are all kept in the garage?
That's correct.
Okay. And there's approximately two hundred. Has that number grown above that at any time or is it still at two hundred?
It's approximately at the same amount that when Lancia, it's inspected in two, two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
So I would say it's around that number.
Okay. Approximately how many are adults? Are you able to hear me or?
Okay, sorry about that. Can everyone hear me alright?
Yes. Well, my question is, I'm wondering, I'd like. Of the age. Are there different stages of, there's adults and then there's I heard there's eggs. What, what happens when they hatch from an egg? Is that, what's that called?
Uh, we refer to them as hatchlings.
Hatchlings, so how many, and then do they progress? Is there like another stage be- before adulthood?
Uh, we would say subadult.
Subadult.
Or juvenile.
Okay, so how many adults, subadults and hatchlings? That's, that's what makes up the two hundred, right?
Yeah, so the sum of all dragons on the property is actually currently less than two hundred dragons.
Okay, what, what's the approximate mix of those three age groups?
Um, so we don't, we, we wouldn't like to get too much into our specific breeding process in a public hearing because as we consider that kind of proprietary, um, to our business, you know, that we wouldn't want to be in a public hearing for our competitors to know. Um, however, I can say that as far as breeding adults, we currently are maintaining approximately eighty.
I'm sorry, did you say eighty-eight zero?
Yes.
Okay.
And the, the sum of the others would be all of the subadult dragons that, that are being marketed for sale.
Okay. Can you tell me of those eighty, how many are males and how many are females?
Um. That is a good question. I didn't think to have that number on hand, so I can't actually, I can't actually provide you a precise number.
Okay, and are these, these eighty, these eighty are what you consider pets or are these the livestock, the?
They're both.
They're both, okay. How many?
We have names for them, you know, we, we take care of them.
Do you know how many of them are, are pets?
Uh, we consider all of them pets, you know, so it, you know, we take care of all of them. We handle them all every day. We feed them all.
Do you sell all of your pets?
Only the offspring are sold.
So how many, um, uh, this past year, how many did you sell?
Uh, that, we would consider that proprietary. If you, if you have questions about specific numbers, we could maybe provide those in, um, outside the public hearing.
Well, but, but it, it, it's part of the fact finding, if you will. Well, you know, there, there's an issue here as to, um, the extent of your commercial use of the property. That's part of the, the, the fact aid issue, so you know, much along the lines of the percentage of the property that's being used for commercial purposes. Uh, it's also the, the extent of the commercial, uh, purpose being used. So, you know, I, I would ask again, um, uh, how as an example, last year, how many, uh, uh, of these, um, bearded dragons were sold?
So I, I don't understand how many would go towards the percentage of the use of the building.
Well, I mean, I, I, I can ask again, but I probably get the same response, so I'll take that to mean you don't want, uh, those facts to be a- allowed
No.
To be known.
Correct. I don't think that's relevant.
Okay, no, I, well, whether it's relevant or not is an entirely different issue. It's that you simply don't want those facts to be known for any reason or purpose.
Well, we did say the reason and the reason is it's proprietary information and I don't ask you what you do to your business or how much money you make.
I didn't ask how much money they made. I, 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 I'm not asking how much money they made, nor do I care how much money they made.
But you would be gauge how much money they were making off of it depending on the amount that they did sell.
I, but I, I, look, I don't care how much money they make. The question was the number of bearded dragons sold and your response is, we will not allow you to have those facts.
And I, I'm not answering that question. My clients don't want me to answer that question because it's not relevant to this hearing.
Well, uh, that's not your determination.
And that's fine. And so you make your fact finding decision. That's your job.
Uh, it's unfortunate from my personal perspective that questions that we have, the response is you will not be allowed to know that. So, you know, my, my question then to, through the chair to town council is what influences, if any, uh, may be drawn from that approach?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
Uh, so I will speak to the relevance, uh, first. The, the zoning bylaw does provide that all animals in quantities of seven or over other than household pets, um, you need a special permit for. Mr. King has just testified that the offlings or, or junior bearded dragons are not pets and therefore the number of, of those animals that are kept on the property are, in my opinion, directly relevant to compliance with that provision of the zoning bylaw. Um, in my opinion, if the applicant do not wants to provide those facts, um, the board certainly can ask its, um, zoning enforcement officer for, um, you know, his at the basis for his finding and what he found and, and his observations as well.
And then I would just like to clarify that you, again, this is an agricultural purpose. Agricultural use of a property is allowed by right in this residential district and therefore it can't be regulated by a special permit and it does not matter how many animals are at the property.
Well, that would also depend upon whether we find that it is an agricultural use.
Okay, um, I'd like to get back, I, I think, just want to clarify. You say the dragons are all kept in the garage. There's no dragons in the residence or basement?
No, everything, oh, dragons are in the garage and the turtles are in the basement.
And I heard there was various types of enclosures. Um, and if, I, I forgot, they're not, are they like aquariums or cages or what, what's a, what are these kept in? Something that keeps them warm, but.
It, it would be a cage.
Okay, and I heard they, you take them outside occasionally? I think.
Other permits.
Okay, what, what happens if, if one of those dragons gets loose? Can they survive? Out in this, in the summer, let's say, or?
No, they cannot. I, I just asked my client. He just nodded to me, no, they cannot survive.
Okay, and then you said their diet was vegetables and, and, and live insects. How, how many, how many live insects do they, does each one eat each day?
But between five and ten, depending on the size of the, the bearded dragon.
Okay, so size being like their length or their weight or?
Correct.
Okay, is it do they eat more? So that would be proportionate to their age, their, likely their age then, so am I assuming that as they age, they would eat more insects?
When they're, when they're growing, they eat more, so the juveniles eat more than the adults.
Okay. So what I'm trying to figure out is how many how many live insects there are. And I don't, I wasn't sure. I think you said these are kept under netting?
Correct.
Is, is that in a, what type of enclosure is that?
In, in a plastic bin.
Plastic bin, so is there, how many bins of, of, I think I heard there was I wrote this down, crickets, super worms and dubia roaches. Is there like one bin of each or is there multiple bins of each?
There's about, there's about ten.
Okay, and.
So it would be multiple of, of each.
Right, do those feeder insects breed or you have to keep buying them?
It's a combination.
Combination. And you're saying that if, that if any of those got out, they couldn't survive in this, in this climate?
That's what RJ testified to.
Is that even in this, even in the summer months or?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, uh. So I, I think I either heard you said or I read part of, of your, um, your Exhibit A, that, that you were saying that there can't be a regulation on the number of animals if, if it's considered agricultural.
Correct.
Now. So when I think of agriculture, I think of like farm. I, and I thought there was something about, you know, being five acres. But I think you're saying because because agriculture is, is allowed in an R three, you're saying the five acres doesn't apply?
Yes. It's allowed, right.
But if you say there's no restriction, does that mean there could be, you know, again, if it was a farm, they, they could have a, you could have a hundred horses or a hundred, a hundred cattle or a hundred chickens or the you're saying there can be no restriction on even the number?
Correct, no, no special permits. You cannot restrict it. If it's not zoned for agricultural use, then the town can restrict it if the property, uh, you can restrict it to properties that are five acres or more.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, please, Attorney Costanzo.
So another important thing to consider is that the the State Zoning Act Forty A, Section Three, that Attorney Pula is cited to or has cited to her in her, um, application to the board states that the primary use of the property has to be agriculture in order for the agricultural exemption to apply. Understood.
Well, you beat me to my next question because right here, I, I was going to ask what the primary use of the property was, whether it was residential or, or the business.
Uh, well, I, I guess I could break that down into two ways. So one, uh, Mr. Lancia, he said that fifty-six percent of the property has been used for this business purpose, which is agricultural. So I think that proves my case right there that it'd be a primary purpose.
Okay.
Um, second, uh, you know, it, it's, it's a secondary use to the property and I don't think that's the spirit of the law. Um, I actually cited a case, uh, it's the Jarvis case which defines that where the, the homeowner was using the property for, uh, a horse training facility and horse riding and they lived on the property and it was determined that the property was primarily used as residential, but it was still agricultural and still exempt.
So already are the pet dragons kept in the house or just all the dragons are in the garage?
The dragons are in the garage.
Okay, and I take it some of your clients live in the residence? I, I thought I saw maybe two of the three live there.
Uh, all three live there.
Okay.
Many employees live there?
Uh, there are two employees of the business and they both live there.
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, they do not live there. I apologize. I misspoke.
Okay. Do you ever take the, your, your pet dragons into the house? Into the residence or they always stay in the garage?
Not normally. They live in the garage.
Okay.
What, what area is in the house are used for the business?
It would be the garage.
So there's no part of the home itself, other than the garage, that is used for any aspect of, in the conduct of the business?
Correct. So as it was cited, you know, when Mr. Lanciani went out, it may have appeared that there was, you know, part of the business that was in the house. But however, the owners of the house are working to, with a contractor, trying to work with a contractor to finish the work so that they can finalize it to contain it to the garage.
So, so it's not located solely in the garage?
It is. That's the main goal. However, there's some other code enforcement actions which we are working with right now to resolve. So it will be 25% or it will be to the garage.
So it, right now, it's in excess of 25% and it's in the house?
One, one moment, RJ will speak.
Okay, so we were, we were cited because we had some shipping boxes in the main area of the house. And we obviously have our personal computer currently in the main area of the house. So, you know, because of the construction materials that displaced those things from the garage. So, you know, it, it kind of becomes down to, well, you know, there's a box on the floor, you know, does that count as this space is used for the business sort of, sort of discussion?
Okay, so the business is not confined to the garage?
Currently, there was, there are some materials that are not in the garage. It does not constitute, like, again, it's, you know, there's a handful of boxes, I believe. Mr. Lanciani obtained some photos that I'm sure that you've all seen.
No, no, we haven't, but we, I, I assume we will be seeing them.
Yeah, so that, so we had some of our shipping boxes, you know, maybe, if I had to guess, maybe eight boxes of boxes that were stored inside the residence of the house. And again, like the personal computer, which we use as a personal computer, also is used, you know, for interacting with emails from customers, for example. So, you know, you could say, okay, well, maybe the computer is, you know, part of the business. Our goal is to locate that outside. However, we can't do that currently because of some of the space that's displaced.
But that is part of the issue as to the use being in excess of 25%.
Well, so I, I do have to ask, so you, you brought up this, the 25%. And then it was mentioned that the square footage couldn't possibly all be finished. If the business is confined to areas that aren't finished, but you only count finished areas as part of that percentage, I don't really understand. Then we would have 0% of houses used by the business or 5%. So I?
Well, you know, that was part of the question that I had. I assume a garage is, is usable space for, for the home. You know, whether it's meant, it, it is, is just usable space as the residence. I, I don't know, but that is part of the issue that we need to make findings on.
I'm gonna step in here. This is Casey Fleming, another resident. We're talking about maybe 30 square feet being taken up by some boxes, shipping boxes temporarily moved because of a construction project that are normally in the garage?
All right. You all set, David?
For now, yes.
All right. I, I did want to, there were references to pictures and videotapes in the packet that were received. And I had not seen any of these. Our zoning enforcement officer is here. I would, is there any possibility we could view those pictures? I don't, not sure if we can post the videotape somehow. If not.
I haven't seen any of these pictures or videos.
I'm sorry?
I haven't seen any of these pictures or videos.
You can see them with us.
Nor have I, but there's reference to them, I think, in one of the, maybe from the home inspection that was done, was it April 23rd? What's the date? The one that they had to report back to the court on their findings. I thought one of these said something about videotape and pictures.
I haven't seen the photos and I, I would ask that the board not show the photos through the public hearing. Because that would be showing the general public the interior of, of the owner's house, which is kind of invasive.
Okay.
But unfortunately, we still need to?
Well, I think you're saying, show it to the public.
Please don't show it to the public. You, as the board may review, is what I'm asking.
I would defer to town council on that.
All right, well, let's, let's hold that for one second. I guess I would like to maybe hear from the zoning enforcement officer. Maybe he can give a verbal description of, of what he saw or, he's been sitting here listening to all this, so he, he's been involved much longer than myself. I'd be interested in hearing his data that he has on the situation. I'm sorry, what are you saying? You have to come up to the microphone. Sorry. Thank you. Well, I think I'd like to know, you know, what you witnessed when you went there. You, you saw, you, the business spread out, you know, amongst, on the property. The thing, the types of things you saw, you know, you saw the animals, you saw the insects, what types of enclosures they were in?
The, Robert, for the record, Robert Lanciani, Building Commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, to try to answer your questions, I have the assessor's map of the house. And I don't know how to show that to everybody. But there's an area in red off the side. This is the garage and the storage area.
Okay, maybe we don't have an overhead camera. So you're zooming in on that, but what are you doing once you zoom in? Would it be helpful if we looked at it as you spoke or, and maybe I can describe it?
The, the areas in red that are on the left-hand side are single-story part of the building. That's the area where the bearded dragons, most of them are kept in plastic containers with a heat lamp on them. Some of them were in metal containers. They also had a large, to me, it was like a terrarium or, I don't know the proper term, glass face that some of the dragons were in. And on top of that, there were turtles.
Okay.
The back room, as you look at that from the street.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry if I could interrupt you. This, this red, we, we have a map here that, that has this red on the left. Is that the residence or is that the garage?
That's the area where the bearded dragons and the insects are kept. That's a garage and other areas that?
So is, is there a, I'm assuming this, this block in the front that is the garage? And then there's the, a large rectangular piece out back. Is that an outbuilding or is that an extension of the garage?
That, over the years, that was built on to the back of the garage is outbuildings. But they're all, it's all interconnected. You walk through it, the whole thing from inside.
And then the blue outline to the right, that's the residence?
The blue to the right is the residence. The first blue block, on the day that we were there, there was a table with business cards, shipping labels, mail for the business on that tape. So I counted that space as part of the business because there was no, didn't look like the, was being used as part of the household area. It wasn't a kitchen, it wasn't a dining room, living room. It was just a room with a table on the day that we were there that had business mail, business cards, shipping boxes, that type of stuff on it. The box to the right-hand side, from the assessor's note, is three stories. The top story is all bedrooms, not part of the business. The first floor is your kitchen, living room, exercise room, another room that were not part of the business. Then the basement had several turtles, supplies that we felt were for the turtles. There were some of the bins with the leaf litter and whatnot in it. And there was a table with a computer set down there and notebooks on the table that were referring to the dragons. So when I determined the amount of the building that was being used for the business, I tried to exclude all of the areas where there was any household, normal household activity in my mind. A kitchen, a bath, you know, those type of rooms. The basement, because there were so many turtles down there, I assumed that that was part of the business activity of breeding reptiles. And the garage, as it was, all bearded dragons and turtles out there also, that was business. And then the one room that had no household things, just the table and the, the business stuff. I, that's how I came up with my square footage and percentages.
All right. So you, so you agree that about 4,000 square feet of space?
I have numbers on there. I believe it's 3791 I came up with. I didn't count a couple of round numbers. And 2,100 in some odd feet of area that was being used in my best estimate for the business.
So there was a total, a total of?
37.
3,700.
And 2,100.
2,100 is being used as a business.
That's what it appeared to me.
Okay.
So for the record, it shows 3791 as what you saw as the space, not including the porches?
Right. I didn't include the porches.
So you're looking at 65% of the, of the structure?
I came up with 56, I believe it was, but I didn't have a supercomputer or an abacus. I had a calculator.
It's far, far exceeds the 25% number.
Yes. If you take away the basement, which is, they say, is only personal pet turtles and not any part of the business, it would reduce it by 450 square feet roughly, which would bring it down less than 50%, which would then make it not primarily agricultural, but business and residential.
Okay. What about the feeder insects? Did you see how they were stored?
They were stored in plastic bins. The animal control officers and the director of public health were more involved with taking pictures of how the insects and the feeders were maintained. They were looking at whether they were properly contained.
Do, do you have any pictures or they have all the pictures?
We all had pictures. I have pictures on the town computer. I have not downloaded them or printed them or anything.
Okay.
I could make that computer available to Mary to produce pictures for all of you if that is needed.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, the board may want to see them. I think the applicant may be correct. I know David wants to get an opinion, but maybe not sure that's for public consumption. How about videos? Would you take videos?
I took no videos.
Okay. Do you know who did take videos or?
I don't. I know that the fire department, the wiring inspector, the health agent, and animal control were all taking photos and/or video for their purposes.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions for zoning enforcement officer?
Yes, I, I would, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, David.
Thank you.
Can't hear you, David.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay.
You referenced the Section 3.8 of the Town Zoning Bylaw. And highlighted all other animals or birds in quantities of seven or over other than customary household pets are excluded from all distance.
David, you're kind of zoning out there.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I thought you could hear me.
You can now.
And no one's ever said that they, they've had trouble hearing my voice. So, through the chair to the building inspector, can you hear me?
Again?
Okay. I'm gonna really speak up now. So can you, can you comment on the, on the highlighted language in the zoning violation cease and desist order dated April 2nd, 2021? And one of the things you reference are customary household pets. Is it your position is building inspector that the bearded dragons and turtles are not customary household pets?
I have never run into the volume of animals in any other location. And then based on the number of them and the, the evidence that we've seen that they're running a business out of the house, breeding them and selling them, and then discussing with town council whether they were or weren't, it was my opinion that that number of them and those animals were not customary household pets.
Now, we heard earlier there were, Attorney Pacula, I apologize if I'm phrasing you wrongly, but some 80 or 90 turtles in the area in the basement. Was that approximately correct, Attorney Pacula?
Approximately 80 total. Oh, I'm sorry, 15 turtles, 15 turtles with how many babies? With, with 12?
Oh, so I, I apologize. So about 40. Okay. Mr. Building Commissioner, do you recall, was that, is that consistent with what you saw when you went there, about 40 turtles?
I didn't count them. Animal Control and Health were more concerned with the numbers of turtles. I was just looking at the floor area of where they were being used. I would not disagree that 40 turtles would be an accurate estimate.
And Mr. Commissioner, when you were down in the basement, did you see anything along the lines of an area for turtles to be played in or play, playground equipment for turtles, if there is such a thing?
I, I saw a tank with water in it that there were turtles in. And then I saw several plastic boxes that had leaf fodder and other things that Animal Control and Fire were more concerned with because of the heat lamps on the dry leaves and the plastic boxes. So I relied on them to do the count of the turtles. I noticed things like extension cords on the floor under things. I saw the, again, the computer table with notebooks with numbers and, and things that, you know, appeared to be business transactions of the animals and the materials for the bedding and whatnot of the animals. materials for the bedding and whatnot of the animals.
Okay, Mister Chairman, I I'll, can can we move on to someone else? I I may want to come back again.
Sure.
Let me just make of a suggestion that that we should continue this and have the building inspector animal control, fire department, electric, everybody involved that took pictures, printed pictures for us. So they won't be available to the public for us to review. And at the same time, have them write a report on what they found in their category, like building inspectors, you know, did his job, then now we got the the animal control.
Did you have to file with this return of administrative expect inspection warrant? It looks like you had to report back to the court on the findings. Was there a was there a report that was generated from that?
We did not have to, we we had to give them back the original search warrant and statement that we had done our investigation. We didn't have to give them the pictures or anything else because we were still.
I think we need all this other information, the photos.
Not sure who we request that from, do you know, Mary or?
Send to animal control, so they have to write up a report.
Well, I guess I'm wondering, did they each write a report?
I'm sure they have to.
Mister Chairman, if I may.
Yes, please.
Oh, when the search warrant was returned, attached to the search warrant were any cease and desist orders or notices of violations that the various departments did did find? Those were the reports that I believe the board is referring to.
Okay, and I don't think we have those in our packet. Yeah, so, okay, so we're, okay. I'd like to ask the zoning enforcement officer, the, one of the, one of the things that I read, something about nuisance odors?
That was in health department.
Okay. You know what that was in reference to or?
The odors in the garage area. My nose doesn't work as well as many of them. I spent too many years pumping septic systems and my nose learned not to smell.
Okay. All right. I'd like to see if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak and we can.
Um, Mister Chairman, if I could, but before you, you out to the public to the applicant, could you comment on 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 whether this is a home occupation and is this use customarily incidental to use of a residential property?
I I would agree that it's a home occupation, but I I don't understand the balance of your question.
Um, that's okay. Mister Chairman, I'll I'll move on to someone else.
But before you open it up for public comment, may I just review a couple of things with you? So one, you know, Mister Lanciaani just testified about the calculation. He did not testify as to actually taking direct measurements of the property. And he, how he arrived at his calculation was not included in the notice, so I would I would say that this is a violation of the owner's due process rights, and they haven't had a notice and opportunity to be heard on this issue. Second of all, you know, agricultural use is allowed by right. Attorney Costanzo had referenced that, you know, it has to be a primary use in order to not be regulated, but that's only for zoning where it's not allowed. So this is allowed by right, so that does not mean it has to be a primary use, secondary use. It's it's strictly allowed and cannot be regulated. Third, you know, you have pet supplies plus in town at one oh one Sutton Street. That is zoned highway interchange. They do not have a special permit and they have more than a bunch of animals which you list in your zoning ordinance.
But Attorney Pacula, you're referencing, you're refer, you're referencing a a commercial store, but your client is in the middle of a residential neighborhood.
I understand that, but your zoning indicates that this special permit is required in every zoning district for more animals, more than seven. So that would mean pet supplies plus also requires it because it's every zoning district, and it does not define whether it's residential or commercial. Additionally, the turtles that Mister Lanciaani had observed in the garage at that time was strictly for hibernation purposes, and they are no longer there. They are in the basement. Last, again, the administrative search warrant, you know, it's our position that that was obtained illegally. So in order to have a basis to get an administrative search warrant, you need to prove to the court that there was an absolute denial of having any effort on the, on the owners to allow the inspectors to come in and do an inspection, and they were trying to work with Lanciaani to coordinate an inspection, which worked with everybody's time. However, it, you know, it's our information in that, in that affidavit that he submitted, that it was submitted under false pretenses. And then lastly, in regards to the nuisance odors, you know, I I don't see any, any neighbors or members of the public who have complained regarding odors.
Was the administrative search warrant allowed by the court?
It was.
Okay.
Yes, Tom?
A couple of questions I have regarding the use of the property in the home, home occupation. Is the, is the applicant contending that it's a it's a home occupation, the business itself? And number one and number two is to the, did they submit an application for a permit to operate a a home occupation, like we all have to conduct a business out of our house?
Do you want to ask these one at a time to the applicant?
Well, it appears as though they can answer. If you want me to do them one at a time?
I I would appreciate that.
Okay. You have a specialty, first of all, did the applicant secure a special permit to conduct a home business or home occupation?
I I don't believe a special permit is required for a home occupation.
Yes, it is. It's it's required by the by the town's general, general bylaws to conduct a business in a residential area.
At what section of the of the zoning?
Again, I'm not, I can't give you the citation on it, but but there's definitely a requirement to have a have a, you have to meet certain criteria.
Okay.
Available parking spaces, numbers of employees, et cetera, et cetera. Do you have customers coming to the house? Are you strictly a mail order and telephone or electronic operating business? And are you right, depending on what type of business you are? Are you a corporation or a DVA or or what? I think we have a few of us that are already, we're businessmen that conduct business out of our residential residences, and yes, we do have permits for it.
Is it a special permit? Is that what it's actually called?
No, it's a, just an application that goes right to the board of selectmen and through the town clerk's office to make sure that it also gets put on the assessor's records, that there's an, there is a commercial operation running at that place, at that site. There are excise taxes and equipment taxes and everything else to go along with it. So this is part of the normal, normal course of business.
Sure, so that was not cited in the the cease and desist order by Mister Lanciaani, so I think that is exceeds the scope of this hearing.
Well, it may be your opinion, but I'm looking to find as many or all of the facts if I can.
Sure.
Not just, not just exactly what's in the report.
Also, I I mean, I would argue that, you know, if it's, it's agricultural use, so that means the entire property can be used to be raising bearded bearded dragons or turtles or whatever they like, because it's for use, pleasure, breeding purposes, commercial, and the business aspect of it is strictly filling orders online, packaging up the bearded dragon and shipping them out. No customers come to the house, so.
That you stating that zoning regulations are now are something that not, that are not legal and they're allowed to continue to run an agricultural operation?
Absolutely.
There is no, no such thing as R three. I can go in and I can, I can put four horses or six horses on my half acre of property?
You can. Agricultural use is allowed by right.
Well, I.
That's forty, a section one.
So does the, does the primary use of the property have to be agricultural?
Not if it's allowed by right.
And it's allowed by right because?
Because your zoning ordinances allow it.
If it's agricultural.
If what's agricultural?
The use that that is at issue here.
Yes, it's allowed by right by your zoning ordinances.
If we find that it is agriculture, that it is an agricultural use.
Correct.
Mister Chair, if I may?
Yes, Attorney.
So just for clarifications, general law, chapter forty, section three does require that the agricultural use be a primary use to be afforded those protections under the statute. The town's zoning by law does not define agriculture, and so therefore, in my opinion, it's up to the the board to determine whether or not this is agriculture as the zoning by law contemplated, consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning by law.
I I disagree with the interpretation, but that's, that's up for the board to decide.
Anybody else have any questions? Well, I'm gonna open it up. There are a couple people listed as neighbor. Somebody else is great out, but it is a public hearing. If anybody would like to be heard on the matter, we'd like you to state your name and address, and we'd be happy to hear what you have to say. Are there, are there any of the, anybody that hasn't been heard yet that would like to weigh in on the matter? Okay, take that as a no for now. I know, I know I would like to see the pictures, maybe just to add a little context. I think there's maybe also, I'm sure zoning enforcement officer understands his math on this, and I somewhat understand, but maybe there's a way we could get this translated or into something that that just shows the math or shows how the calculation was made.
I I would object to that because that would be outside the scope of the appeal. That wasn't provided in the original notice, and then that, it's not, it's not giving us a notice and opportunity to be heard. This is the appeal. This is the hearing we have, and these are the, this is the order that we are relying on, not an additional order.
Well, it it deals with the computation of the math that was used in the decision by the building inspector.
But that wasn't provided to us, so that I would consider that you, that was secret. You didn't disclose that to us, so how could we be prepared to argue it or defend ourselves?
Would, would you like to provide evidence right now as to the square foot area used versus not used?
No, I do not, because that's not part of the scope of the, of the order.
I, but that, that, that goes that goes along with what we need to be finding.
And that's our decision, and I don't want to go around in circles with this.
All, all we can do is offer you the opportunity to put in the evidence that you are 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 referring to, that that we should not be able to, to, to see anything on. And if if you choose not to, you choose not to.
Absolutely, because I'd rather preserve my right to appeal and bring this to a superior court judge and have him decide. And I, I just want to mention that the same exact issue has been before this board with the Fink case. I don't know if you recall that, but it involved a breeding of dogs and then purchasing dogs in a kennel. And the court upheld that the breeding of their own dogs that they personally owned was specific to agricultural use and was allowed by right. However, any dogs that they did purchase from another third party and stored on their property, that was considered a kennel, so it's two separate.
Well, you're you're looking at two totally different types and kinds of animals.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't matter.
I don't think anyone's going to mistake a bearded dragon for a dog.
I I don't think that matters, though.
Okay, and that, that's your, that's your client's position? Any type of animal can be there as of right.
As long as it's for breeding purposes, raising purposes, commercial use or pleasure, and it belongs to the owners.
I'd like to ask Mister Lanciaani if he can come up. I have a couple of questions, just like, you know, the, the paperwork that was somewhere in the paperwork, and I know it was talked about the fifty-six percent. I'd just like maybe for you to explain verbally how you arrived at that.
As I said earlier, the fifty-six percent, I used the areas on that map that I gave you. I took a calculator.
This was the outline of the assessor's map.
Outline that I got from the assessors that they had done a tape measurement of the house. No one has ever questioned them of the accuracy of their findings. I used their measurements to calculate. I put length in the calculator, hit multiple times, put the width in, and came up with the square footage for each area.
That was done for each of these rectangles?
That was done for each rectangle, and then I put each of those numbers in and hit add, and I came up with a total. I came up with twenty-one something square feet that was used. And I came up with thirty-seven hundred, and I don't remember the exact amount of total floor area. And then I used division to come up with a percent. Okay.
Mister Chair, Mister Chair, if I may, because we are in a remote forum and Attorney Pacula can't see what was just handed in by the building commissioner, I I would suggest that the board continue to give her an opportunity to review the document before engaging in in further conversations about it.
Okay. So we would what, make a photocopy of this and make sure it's sent to the, to the applicants or?
You you can, you can do that, or at the next public hearing, when you continue, we can have it up and do a screen share in the same manner as, as you've done before, but because we, we don't have the ability to put it up on the screen, if you do have the ability to put it up on the screen now, I I think that that would be sufficient and give her an opportunity to see what's being discussed, but because she doesn't have it, and we can't hand it to her as we could if we were in person, I I do think that you should have an opportunity to review it so she can understand what's being said and ask any questions or respond to them.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. All right, so I've heard that, and I know I'd like to see some pictures, and if we could figure out how to get a report from photocopy or and maybe give that to Mary. Mary, if you would please be able to, you'd be able to scan that for view at the next meeting or something?
I'd like.
Okay.
I will make a drawing of this and do all my calculations in long on paper so that you can see my numbers and verify the calculations.
Again, I'm, I'm going to object to that because that's not at the time and place of when he did the inspection. This is after the fact. And so I don't know if his math was correct when he did the inspection. It was not included in the notice. So again, it would be a violation of our due process rights, and there's been no notice and opportunity to be heard.
You're saying you'd like to see the original?
No, I would like to have it in the original order. It should have been in the original order so that we know how he arrived at that calculation.
Okay.
The order is arbitrary and capricious.
Right, so the reports that we wanted to get, what, what's the process for getting those? Would that be something Mary would be able to request from Board of Health or Animal Control Fire Department?
Each of the inspectors, we'd like a summary report or report, not a summary report. I don't want them rewriting it. I'd like a copy of their findings. And any by, and, and anymore, any, any of their findings and or violations. That were observed, whether they were acted upon or not.
If any corrections were made.
And if any corrections were made.
So.
At the time of inspection or as a result of the inspection.
We'll have to figure out how to get that, I guess. And then pictures.
Including any supporting documentation, pictures, videos, et cetera, et cetera.
I would also ask that those be provided to me as well so that we have an opportunity to review prior to the next hearing.
Okay, so.
That's appropriate.
How, how long do we, was there some, one other piece that someone was looking for? I think maybe that was it. So how long do we think it's going to take to get that and then get it to Attorney Pacula? And we would have to schedule a meeting for after that time continuation, so. Is that something we think Mary might take a week, two weeks to?
I figure Monday's the whole of it.
I'm on vacation next week. So I won't be in the office at all.
Two weeks of fair.
Tomorrow.
I'm sorry, tomorrow you are in or not?
I am not in tomorrow.
Okay.
And I'm out, out next week. Board meets on Thursdays, so the possibility of continuation could be June tenth. Or June twenty-fourth, seventeenth is occupied already.
June tenth, June twenty-fourth, do you think there'd be sufficient time to get that before June tenth?
I think that would be up to Attorney Pacula, whether that's enough time for her to review.
No, would we even be able to get it first?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that shouldn't be a problem.
Get it and get it to her. I could do it on the seventh when I return from vacation.
You'd be able to send it to her on the seventh?
Correct.
Okay, so Attorney Pacula, I'm not sure if you heard that, but it sounds like we think we'd be able to gather that information by June seventh. Get it to you then and we could continue the hearing either on June tenth or June twenty-fourth.
I, I, I think I would prefer the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
And provide the same information. I guess we're gonna have to go to our own town council. Uh, CC all correspondence like that to town council too.
I'm sorry?
We'd have to CC all of the communication that we're sending Attorney Pacula. We'd have to send that to town council.
Sure.
Well, if you want us to have it, town council send it to me directly, that's fine too.
I was just going to say the same thing. I'll send it to town council. Town council can forward it to.
Okay. All right, is there any other questions, Al?
Yes, can I ask Attorney that represents the owner? Yes, who, who is running this operation? Who is in charge?
It, it's the owners of the household.
And it's not the corporation?
Well, they are incorporated, but the, the owner of the corporation lives in the house.
What portion of the house is used by the corporation?
This has already been asked and answered and I, I think this is.
I hadn't heard any answers to this. I hadn't heard any answers to corporation. Some questions came up that I know from stuff before. The tax situation is entirely different for a corporation locally. As to individual owners. I don't know if those laws have changed over the years or not, but if you're incorporated, you pay taxes to the state, not to the town.
No, you do pay, you, there's excise tax on, on your equipment and materials and office furnishings.
Not on corporation.
Oh, yes.
Didn't before.
Oh, yes, sir. I get a tax bill every year.
Is the corporation running, running?
A corporation is an entity, so a corporation doesn't really do, do the work. A corporation is, is a, a legal structure.
Is contrived incorporated? In charge of this operation?
No, an individual needs to be in charge of an operation.
Through its agents.
Sorry, Al, what are you saying?
I would just want to know, is the corporation running the operation or is the? Owner of the property running it?
The one in the same.
Corporation is different.
How is it different?
Might be the same owner.
It's a legal structure, but does not have its own mind or thinking. It can't, it can't send out invoices.
Mister Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Attorney Costanzo.
It seems to be that the, the question being asked is whether or not the business is being done through the corporation. Or through the individuals, the corporate, the individuals acting as agents of the corporation is. Or are they acting independently? So letterhead, business cards, checks. Are they going to the individuals or to the businesses? Is that fair, a fair characterization of the question?
Much better asking it than.
He's saying yes.
So the, the corporation is the contrived Inc. And the owners of the households are agents of the corporation. Or I should specifically say it would be Casey Fleming. He is the only person listed on those corporate papers.
Is, is the business name that I say it was, see it was here, the Dragons?
Correct.
Is that part of the corporation or is that a new name for it?
It's a DBA.
DBA, okay. Okay. There's no other questions. I think we're going to look for a motion to continue. To June twenty-fourth with the intent of gathering some pictures, video, reports. Findings and the violations they found and getting that information to town council. Attorney Pacula, you know, ahead of this meeting, ahead of the continued meeting, the continuation date.
And then I, I just would also reiterate that we would not like the photos shown to the public. Because we do believe it would be an invasion of privacy.
Okay, I, I don't have a problem with that. I think that's reasonable.
I'd like to ask town council, we can do that? We can keep the photos confidential?
So Attorney Costanzo, the question is, are we allowed to, because this is a public hearing. Are we allowed to maintain privacy of some of the information we receive? Is that acceptable or is there some legal concern that, that we can't do that?
So it, the answer is it depends. There are certain documents that if they're submitted under seal, they could be kept under seal. It's my understanding that these are public records of the town. I can look further into it and I will be in touch with Mary before any documents are released.
Okay.
There, there is a privacy exemption under the public records law.
Okay.
So there, there's a balancing test that you do have to. Evaluate.
Okay. All right, so.
So move.
So we have a motion, Tom, to what, continue when?
To continue to. June twenty-fourth, at seven P M. At seven P M.
Okay, we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by David. All right, I guess we'll call for the vote. Tom Purcell?
Tom Purcell, yes.
Al, just Saint Germain. Al, both to continue?
I thought to continue.
Okay. Steven?
Uh, yes, continue to, uh, June twenty-fourth.
David?
David Silverman, I to continuing to June twenty-fourth.
Pete LaPlas, yes, continue June twenty-fourth. All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, I appreciate your time. Good night.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the here, the ZVA here, meeting.
I, I. David Silverman, I.